Scott, have you ever heard of all his, all his Vicki's husband Kenny?
I haven't heard.
I heard Maki might know.
All right, the red light's on.
All right.
We can start that G W here.
Maybe he's doing virtual today. We're supposed to get together with him after this meeting.
Are we?
Okay, we'll see. It can be rescheduled, but.
For, for what reason?
Give him a broadband update.
No, and that's fine. I just got that.
We'll see how long it goes. See how long winded Chris is. Boy, did he hear that.
He heard that.
It's gonna be real long. Joanna, do you remember how many meals we served last year? Off the top of your head by chance. Picnic. Two hundred?
Well, we have it written down somewhere. I could tell you a little.
We're thinking two hundred. Is that too high? No?
No, if I would have guessed, it was like a hundred and eighty-two.
Okay.
Okay.
We had a really good turnout.
Yeah.
I think it might be better this year.
It'd be better?
I think so.
Because of the word of mouth?
Well, that and some people are back and.
Yeah, we're not gonna spring it on at the last minute. Camera ready?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Ed got your phone on vibrate?
Yep. The bad news was I just got a message. I need more diesel fuel.
Jared's lucky that mine was, because I barely heard it that you were down there.
Yeah.
I was talking with him. I.
Where's that vibration come from?
Your truck ain't even there, so.
Oh, he's hooked to the trailer.
It's out there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That last minute sure takes a.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Approver amend the agenda. Monty.
Mr. Chair, we have three items to add today. So, under County Engineer at nine thirty-five, right before engineering update, let's please add two items. The first being the MinDOT Construction Partnership Agreement. The second would be the Kasha Thirty-three Access in Sartell associated with the Verso site. So that would be the second item. And then we have an item from Commissioner Heinem on the use of ARPA funds. If we could please add that before Commissioner meeting updates at nine fifty, right before Commissioner meeting updates. And that's our result. We have.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on all this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. The county board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off the cell phones or turn them on vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Anybody out there? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda items one through eleven. What would you like to do with them?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next, Monty, County Administrator. Presentation Retirement Award for Benton County's Emergency Management Director Jim McDermott.
So, and in a moment, we'll ask the board chair to come up to the front here and then pose for a photo. And presentation of our clock to Jim.
There you go, sir. I hope it doesn't have an alarm on it, because I don't plan on using it anymore. Well, if it does, I don't know how to work it. Well, thank you for your services. You truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Got to turn and face the camera.
Do one more. Thank you.
Is this for the new county dartboard? It is. And when, when will your retirement start? Uh, end of the month. End of the month? July first is the first day of freedom. What are you gonna do after that, then? Uh, then I can start looking for another job.
Thanks, Jim. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Looks like I am next.
Uh, discuss the request for proposals or space needs assessments. Monty.
Well, of course, the purchase of the property across the street is now complete. Uh, it was done a couple of weeks ago, and that's in county ownership. So I thought it might be nice to move on to the next step. As you know, we had worked quite a bit with Vetter Johnson and originally, we, we started talking really more in the, in the, about renovations. And that really seemed to be kind of their, um, their niche was, was doing renovations. And at the time, we were talking about possibly doing some renovations for D N B, possibly the old courthouse and so on. And as time has gone by, as we purchased this property, that's really opened this up to a different scale, really more looking at new construction. So, it seemed like a good time to pause and consider the services of, of other firms. And I'm not, again, not no discredit whatsoever to Vetter Johnson. I think they're a great firm. Uh, but it might be nice to stop and, and, and look at some other firms. Especially maybe those who have some experience with new, more experience with new construction. Again, it seems like Vetter's done a super job with renovations. They did the work in Morrison and in Malax County. So what I have here is a, basically a request for proposals. And what it's, it's seeking is a firm to help us really kind of brainstorm and, and think about what would a building look like? Who would occupy it? Really almost kind of stepping back from, from, from scratch and starting over again and really looking at the bigger picture here. Of who, again, what would a building look like? Who would be there and so on? Maybe sort of casting all former assumptions aside and just starting fresh. Uh, so this, this isn't that, for example, asking for an architect to design a specific building. Because I guess I wouldn't be able to tell an architect, well, I don't know how big it is. I don't know what it'd look like. So we really need to start with that sort of conceptual basis and, uh, and do some brainstorming first. So that's really what this proposal asks for. You can see kind of some of the, the details are in page three. The, the detailed work plan. That's kind of where it gets down to the details of what we're asking for. Scoping meetings with the board and departments. An assessment of that vacant parcel to really sort of size up its advantages and its disadvantages that, some of that site. Talking to the city of Foley about the city's concerns, you know, as far as, I know the city has concerns, concerns about, for example, traffic going out that south end by those houses. Well, that, that's an issue. We heard that in the, in the zoning meeting. I know they want a sidewalk down one side and so on, just so they make sure understand the city's issues. Uh, sketches, uh, help us kind of visualize what would a building look like.
Bless you.
Um, and then cost estimations. At this point, if we're kind of going off for us sketches, I don't know necessarily that the cost estimates will be super detailed. But hopefully they're, they're in the ballpark to give the board a sense, okay, what are we up against here? What, what kind of cost? Frankly, at this point, I have no clue what our cost would be. So this is, we would need cost estimates and then hourly rates, uh, backgrounds of staff involved and client references. So that's, that's some of the details of what we look for in a proposal. I think that's, the rest of it, just some boilerplate stuff that we'd want to see in any kind of contract. And it envisions on the last page, proposals would be received by mid-July. And then, um, they'd be shared with you all. And one option is, is the board could possibly narrow it down and then have some in-person interviews with these companies and make some decisions about who you might want to go with. I definitely would recommend some in-person interviews with these companies. So, thoughts and reactions?
Mr. Chair, I think it's great. Get started on this right away. You know, the East Saint Cloud issue is coming up for us faster than we think. So, you know, we've got to obviously address that with this, too. Um, just one thought, Monty. What would be your thoughts about maybe presenting very high-level tax impacts at, you know, a ten, a fifteen, a twenty, a twenty-five million dollar?
Sure.
You know, just, just an idea of what that means.
Yeah, I, I will do that separately.
Yep.
Working with North, Northland Securities to get you a sense of what would be the levy requirement for, like you just said.
Different.
I've had a note, a note to myself on that for a long time, but yes, I, I will get that for you from Northland.
I think that's a good number to have in the back of our head is looking at concepts.
What kind of levy? Yeah, given prevailing interest rates, what would be the levy impact of various bond levels?
You bet. Yep. Got it.
Commissioner Pop?
I, I think it's a good idea. We're stepping back and looking at what our needs are and what we're gonna have, if we're gonna do anything across there. I think there's some perception out there that, um, I don't think from what I've heard is that a lot of people are in favor of spending ten, fifteen million dollars on just human services. I think they, they feel it's, you know, it's more of a, um, more, human services is more of a burden to the taxpayers than it is a necessity, and I think that, that's gonna come out when we start doing this. So I think it's good. We're stepping back and seeing what we want. We know there's a need for more space. Or else we have to look at, uh, at, you know, what we got in Saint Cloud. And I think we need to assess the Saint Cloud situation a little bit deeper, because we heard yesterday from one of them that they're, you know, they, they thought it was a good idea that she's meeting clients there. So I think we need to assess that a little bit more maybe before we totally abandon that. And we're in no time, we're in no timeframe, because we have, after the current lease, we can go year by year or whatever we want there. So I think the timeframe is on our side, and I think this is a good idea.
I, I would share the same opinions, too, that this is not a building just for human services. It's for the county.
I, I think it'll be a hard sell if we're gonna
Right.
tack it to human services.
Sure. Right. Mr. Chair? I agree.
I, I concur with everything that's set up here. Uh, another thing that we should really note is we do got a lot of things coming off our roll here in the next couple of years, which is really gonna help facilitate a, a move like this. The other thing is, is the, the cost to renovate a building like this is, it's actually probably defeating the purpose when it comes to the money standpoint. You're gonna have, you're gonna have a lot of money into doing some, some moves here, and you're not gonna gain space.
Right. I, I just think that if, if you're gonna spend the money, you're gonna have to look at something to make it attractive and something that the people appreciate. Then something that we see more as a necessity. I think they want to see something that the, the largest portion of the public is gonna use. And other than that, I don't think it's gonna be looked on too favorably.
Any other opinions, concerns from commissioners? Okay, Monty.
Uh, just looking for a motion. If you're okay with me sending this RFP out.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I should just mention is that somewhat ironic is, oh, about two weeks ago, I got this really thick book. It's a directory of like every architectural firm in the state. It's totally coincidental. But anyway, I'll push it out. And you know, I'll definitely push it out to Saint Cloud-based firms.
It would be nice if we could get a firm that's in the county.
At least in this region.
We can do that. I don't.
It's gonna be kind of tough.
You know, and I should, I'm sorry, I should mention, I did contact the city of Saint Cloud, City of Sock Rapids and Foley, I'm sorry, Sock Rapid Rice Schools to find out who have they used for design and construction management? So I have those names from them. Yeah, so.
Well, there's been people at AMC conferences, too, that they specialize in county, like, you know, the remodel or the construction and this stuff.
Uh, this, this book, this director I have is incredible. I mean, names, contacts, email addresses, so that was really helpful. Okay, swear it was a coincidence.
It was a coincidence, I guess.
All right, let's move on.
Yes, move on. Discuss matching funds for the park legacy.
Yeah. So the Park Commission is working with, uh, Paul Schrader from SRF on a legacy grant application. And the, the next deadline for the current round of, I'm just gonna open up something on the screen for you, is, is the end of July. So it's kind of a time above, is of the essence here to, okay. My goal in bringing this up is kind of just essentially illustrate some of the projects that the Park Commission is looking at with Paul. So here we have is a graphic illustrating, uh, the park. And basically, the dotted lines represent new trails that could occur primarily on the east side of the park. So, um, just enhancing the trail network that's, that's there is, is one idea. So I, this, I should just say, this was, um, this is an initial concept plan presented by Paul. The final one might be a little different. The, the Park Commission ultimately works out. So more trails and then moving on down, another big possibility would be a, a, so here we are, to get your, kind of get your bearings, this is the farmstead and there's the parking lot. Uh, a shelter, picnic shelter here by the farmstead. And then a, a play area, a nat- natural play area, uh, not far away. So that's another package of, of ideas. This just represents some possible different locations for where that play area could be. I believe the Park Commission was most comfortable with this one. The shelter here and the play area here. Just another point of reference where I'm circling here, that's the bathroom building, so it probably makes sense. It's close to those bathrooms. So, so my ideas, I'm just scrolling on now. What, uh, this is kind of some examples of what natural play areas could look like. Again, uses all natural features and so on. It blends in with the environment up there. These are just some examples that Paul shared with the Park Commission of what a natural play areas could look like. So utilizing natural, uh, materials and so on. And then he gave us some examples of what a shelter could look like. So it seemed like the Park Commission was leaning towards the largest, the large one that would house five, fifty to a hundred people. So a large shelter, something like the one over on the right here. So just an example of what a shelter building could look like. And th- those are the big things. So trails, shelter, playground area. So again, Paul is working with the Park Commission on, on a legacy grant application due end of, end of July. And Paul tells us that, uh, we probably should consider identifying a local match of about fifteen percent. Now, I should stress is that, that you could submit a grant application with zero local match. But you're gonna miss out on points that go with your local match. It sounds like the, the sweet spot, sweet spot, so to speak, of a local match is in that about that fifteen percent range. It gets you more points. So he's suggesting we identify a local match of about fifteen percent. So, he's given us a, a range of estimates of what these projects could cost. Uh, let's see here. I have an estimated cost, uh, I'm sorry, the, the estimated total is between five hundred thousand to a million, so not, not inexpensive by any, any stretch. The nice thing, though, is that could bring in a range of four hundred and twenty-five to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of legacy grant money. That's the, that's the benefit. And as you can see in my estimated impact, the range of local match could be between about one fifty to two twenty-five. And so why, why the ranges? I, I think at this point, again, he's, he's using some, um, generally accepted construction factors. These aren't specific, uh, estimates based upon an actual building. So I think to be conservative, he's kind of given us a range of here's where this might possibly land. And, uh, so, uh, I, I, at this point, again, I think we're looking for some, some board direction, possibly a more formal motion on are you ready to commit the local resources for the local match? Um, let's see, what else do I have to add here? I should add one more thing. So there's, the match really has two pieces. One is to provide the local match for the legacy grant. The second part is additional costs incurred by SRF to, uh, develop the detailed construction plans for bidding. And also then project management during construction. Um, that's additional cost. It's built into the, the numbers that you see here. So I think, you know, if we actually were awarded grant fundings, we would need their assistance to, again, do specific designs, put them out to bid and do some actual project management. I should just mention, about ten, twelve years ago, when Paul was with Westwood, this is exactly what they did for us then. Uh, the grant we got was a little smaller than it was about two, two fifty, something like that. But they did, they did this exact same work for us in those days. So I think it's one reason why Park Commission really favored going with Paul, because they knew he had, he had gone through this before with us, so. I think that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair. Be happy to answer. Any questions if I can?
Mr. Chair.
So, Ma- Monty, the source of funds would be the C I P fund?
Yeah, so we have, we have sufficient balance in our C I P that would cover, that would cover this local match.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
So my question's maybe for you and Commissioner Pop and Monty. Historically, what's been the board's attitude towards this type of investment at the park? And taking upwards of, if I'm seeing this right, upwards of three hundred grand of C I P funding towards that? What, what's been the historical?
We're.
I mean, has this been a planned item for a number of years or is this fairly new?
Fairly.
Go ahead, Monty.
So let me, I guess, um, so when the legacy program was first enacted, and if I recall correctly, it's, it's from a share of lottery pursuits.
Right.
And so about, is it ten, twelve years ago, when legacy grants first became available, we, we applied. We, and really, we did that with assistance of, of, at the end of time, Westwood. And of course, and then we were going after, now, now I'm thinking I remember the numbers, like about two seventy-eight or something. So the match was a lot smaller. Uh, but the board did identify it, and if I recall correctly, a lot of the match at the time came from park dedication funds, because back in those days, we had a much bigger balance in park dedication. So it was mostly from park dedication. Well, then the rules changed about how you could get legacy grants. The legislature created this Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission. So in order for you to get any legacy grants in the future, you had to get regional park designation. And, uh, so we only just got that recently. So that's when we partnered with Stearns County to do that joint, uh, park master plan and joint application. So I guess the point I'm trying to make here is this question hasn't been before the board for over a decade.
Okay.
And really, it's because we couldn't, because we didn't have regional designation until just recently.
Okay.
So there's not a lot of history.
That's right.
So the next question's kind of twofold. So then can park, a dollar be used for this? Because you're not identifying any here now. You're using all C I P funding?
And then fortunate thing is there's very little left in park dedication.
Okay, and then what goes with that, then, is you have sufficient balance in our C I P funding? How does that work into the budget proposals, though, for the C I P needs coming up in this coming year? I mean, three hundred thousand's a lot of money.
Yep. I, I, I agree. And, uh, right now, uh, little, 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 going back a little bit, so about three years ago, the board moved about two million dollars into our C I P, uh, out of our revenue fund, fund balance. We've spent that down to some extent, but right now, there's still probably of that original two million, there's roughly about one point five left that's in the, the C I P fund balance. Now, uh, could we certainly spend that on other projects, for example, like a building across the street? Absolutely, for sure. Uh, could it be used for other things? Yes, it could be. So I, I think, uh, the, really the question before you is, is, you know, do, are you wanting to invest in Bend the River and bring some of these enhancements to it? And, and as you, as you see in the cost estimate, you know, the potential is to bring pretty substantial legacy grant funds into, into the county.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pop.
Um, so what I understood, Monty, at that meeting was so that there's a list of projects. You know, we listed them in order, and I truly don't think the county's gonna get the total package. They're not gonna pick that much money, you know, like they have the shelters and they have the trails. And it's, they're gonna, they're gonna do it as a package deal, but they may pick out and say, okay, we'll do the, the legacy will fund the trails. True, I don't think that will be on the hook for the whole, you know, we'll, I just don't see we're gonna get the whole ball of wax from that. There's a lot of money there, but there's a lot of, a lot of wants. So I think that part, you know, and we could, we can pick and choose from what I understand from Paul.
Right.
And we could say we want the, the shelter to be the top priority, the trails to be next, and, I mean, they even talked about a canoe landing down and by the river. There was a huge amount of, of things in this proposal that are probably not all gonna happen. So I don't think we have to worry about, you know, probably the three hundred grand all at once. Uh, if we do get it, it'd be a great addition to the, to the, uh, facility out there. Um, I just seen that it's probably not.
We, yeah, and, and we knew this was gonna come forth in front of us when we signed up with Stearns to get regional designation.
Yeah.
Designation, and we knew we would have to move forward.
And I think, you know, what I heard from, when I first got on the board was that Watab Township put up a big part of the money from their park dedication when they did the last one.
Yeah.
I meant, I've heard that over and over and over and over.
Some things, some things you hear all the time.
Correct. But so, you know, I, I, I mean, I think it would be great if we got that much in it, but then it is a cost to the county of three hundred grand, which is, like you said, not a, a small amount of money that we could use other places, too.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I love the fact that there's a lot of money coming in. I am a little worried about the, uh, I think it's up to two twenty-five in the C I P.
Yep.
Seventy-five grand there for D N R that they're.
D N R.
Oh, okay. So with, with that said, people gotta also look at the upkeep as well after that.
Yeah.
That's an additional cost that's gotta come into play.
Yep. You build it, you gotta maintain it. That's true. Yeah, you're right.
What, what is a timeframe if this was awarded and when would you have to have it built by?
Yeah, Paul reviewed that with us, so, uh, to kind of cut to the chase, uh, it sounds like award decisions will be made this winter. And then you have got to go through environmental work and historical preservation review and design in two thousand twenty-three. So I believe you wouldn't be looking at construction until two thousand twenty-four. Yeah. It's a pretty long process.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'm just thinking. Still a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, but unfortunately, you know, you guys weren't on the board at the time when we did get this. And we knew we had to do it. I agree, it is a lot of money. But I'm one for parks, you know? And it is a nice park. It will, it can be a nice park.
It is. It's, you know, we, the, the people that are on the park board, most of them, I think, use it fairly well.
It sounds like it, yeah.
Cindy is really out there a lot, and you, it's surprising how many people use the park.
Right.
The other part that we probably don't see and don't hear is that you would not believe if people are looking to move to the area that this is on, at the top of their list or one of their lists that they, if there's a park nearby, yeah? You know, we did lose maybe a little bit of luster, because Stearns County was gonna purchase an additional. You know, we did lose maybe a little bit of luster because Stearns County was gonna purchase an additional hundred and twenty acres, I think.
Across the river.
And that has been sold to private development now, so that's not gonna happen.
Mr. Chair, would it make sense, Monty, would it proportion proportionately change if, for example, we committed a hundred and fifty? Does that just change, that just change the percentage that the match would be? Which may not score as well.
It could change the percentage that we apply for, or it could possibly reduce the number of projects we apply for. Um, probably if it were me, I would probably reduce the number of projects we apply for and keep that match higher. Because the higher the match, the more points you get.
Yep.
Uh, so then you hopefully, you know, ensure you're gonna get some of these resources. So probably I would just cut back on on projects rather than the percentage of match.
Is there, Mr. Chair, is there, um, you know, as we're gonna do the the thinning of the trees, there's some revenue there?
Yeah, ten fifteen thousand maybe.
Yeah, I mean.
And that goes back into the park fund then?
We'll, we'll put that right back in the CIP, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, it's unfortunate the park, see, way back, way back when, all the park dedication money went to, went into one big bucket and it could be used anywhere in the county. So then, oh, ten, twelve years ago, the legislature changed it where where seventy-five percent went into each township bucket. So now it's all spread out into twelve buckets. And it's just not as accessible as it used to be. So there really isn't much there to work with.
Commissioner Pop, so you think Langola would uh offer some other dedication?
They might be tapped out, eh?
Well, you know.
That's true, because I should mention is all their park dedication
Is gone.
Went to the playground installation.
Okay.
That's right.
And I don't, I don't know what WATAB has got in there as I, you know, if it would be a sell to.
But we're still looking basically two years out though too, so.
Yeah. You know, and I know there's a fair amount of activity going on in WATAB right now and there's residents in WATAB that think that this is great. They're there.
Mr. Chair, what about doing something like naming rights? And sponsorships and stuff like that? If we got two years to do this, we could dedicate uh the CIP right now. But let's just say that a corporate sponsor wanted to come put their name on the, like, the regional park.
I suppose that's possible, huh?
It's it's a huge park and I think there'd be some, some people that might have interest in that.
I mean.
Do we lose the county designation then? I don't know.
No, you'd keep the county's designation, but it'd be like a naming right, no different.
The Gopinski Park.
They would, no.
Yeah, I don't think I'll put my name on it, but yeah.
They would probably sponsor.
Donor.
Yep.
They would, they would probably sponsor like a playground equipment or something like that, something that's added to the. I'm in favor of it. That's just my opinion.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm just trying to think through.
You know, I I'm in favor of it, but it's a large dollar amount. Um, but maybe we look long term on what the benefits are to the county and it might not be all that bad. I mean, even from, um, you know, if you have a housing development or something come in, that's part of what they'll they'll, they'll um, not help pay for, but they'll promote.
Well, look how, look how, look how the housing development is going right now in Rice.
Yeah.
Look at all those additional houses that are going in that area that is only a mile away from this park.
Right.
Do we have any idea how many people use that park?
Well, I don't know. I I know you can go there anytime. Almost during the day and the evening at five o'clock, I went faster and there's gotta be fifteen cars in both them parking lots.
Okay.
You know, and I've never been there in the winter, but according to Cindy Voight, that, I mean, there's people out there cross countries or snowshoeing, cross-country skiing.
I I think it gets used more than what we realize.
Yeah, I really do. I think it's used way more. I mean, you just look at the number of people that you see in the area that come with their wedding or graduation pictures that are taken out there.
Mr. Chair, I'm I'm in favor of moving forward, but I would like to see us get creative with with additional funding. We've got a, we got a couple of years. We can't lose sight of the timeframe because that goes quick as we know.
Yeah.
But I I would like to see us get creative on on bringing in some additional funds to help fund this.
And you're right, Commissioner Pinsky, we do have time on our side, except we have to act on this part of it quickly.
Well, because of the application process.
Yep, Commissioner Johnson?
Any other opportunities on other funding sources? Solid waste? Et cetera.
Well, solid waste, you know, we can tap into it just like we did for Eisenstein, you just have to repay it.
Right.
You know, so, um, so again, there's, there's cash in CIP, there's cash in in solid waste. You know, obviously the CIP resources we have to repay, but the solid waste fund we have to, so. CIP is about the only again source I can think of at this point, and we know there's cash sitting there, so.
Monty, what, wait, I mean, we just have to identify the source. We have to, we won't have to put the money towards it.
Right, again, we won't, we won't.
Twenty twenty-five maybe?
It's twenty-four, at least before we're paying a contractor, right? This is just, you're pledging and identifying that you've got the resources available. And then Paul can, so what Paul eventually is gonna need from us is um, a resolution which says we agree to pledge the, you know, whatever dollar amount, and then that goes in the application package is that, is a resolution. And I think at the next Park Commission meeting, so the the first one was it was a few weeks ago. It was really just kind of high level brainstorming possibilities and rough estimates and so on. The next meeting will be more refining, okay, what specifically do we want to apply for? What specific projects are we gonna go for? So I I think one of my purposes was so the Park Commission would know next time what they got to work with. What's your kind of universe here to work with? I think they needed to know that because there wouldn't be a sense in them going, you know, really high and then later the board says, oh, you know, that this doesn't work for us. So given the timing of the the deadline, I think they kind of need to know at the next meeting, here's what they have to work with.
And I guess, I think we should, you know, Paul seemed to think that we should go for the gusto, you know, everything. But I really, I can't see where they're gonna put that much money towards, you know, they may pick and choose different things that out of our, out of the plan that we can do.
Mr. Chair, I'll just share with you what I'm thinking here and the reason, again, not to oppose it, but this is one of the few things that we can, what I quote, control and what costs, costs us. Um, library board, or library, for example, by statute, we gotta spend the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars divided by, we've been reported six thousand people use the library system. You can come up with a per capita number, right? Pretty easy. So and that's why I kind of asked here.
Yeah.
I have no idea how many people use it, you know, and you divide that into the three hundred grand. What does that cost per person to have it? And again, not that I'm opposed to it, I just, it's one of those things that you have to figure out, and certainly there's economic benefits there. I get that. That's the hard part.
Yep.
Justifying that.
I guess the easy part I have with that though is that this is a one-time shot.
And I certainly get with being able to, you know, five hundred to a million dollars coming in.
Yeah.
Considerable.
The other thing I I I would like to note is you you hear Amanda from BEP always promoting parks and rec and on development. And whether people use it when they move here is one thing, but it's a selling point to get them to.
Sure, they're still moving here.
They're still moving here. I mean, I love to go to parks, I just don't have the time.
Sure.
You know? So.
But you you brought up another very good point, and that's the ongoing maintenance, and that's
Yep.
It's fat.
We didn't talk to property maintenance, but you know, they're out there on a regular basis. Now, but then, you know, and they did, did we talk about, Monty, about rental?
Uh, I don't recall, but that's possible. I suppose, um, you know, the the shelter building, I suppose, could be a facility that could be reserved through and and paid for with a rental.
And we did talk about, you know, the online stuff, meaning we went that route, that they could just add that.
We could add that as a facility rental.
You know, obviously it's a ways down the road, but you're gonna have continued CIP draws on this for maintenance.
Right. Probably wanna make it subject to reservation because then you wouldn't have people arguing about, well, I got it this, you know?
Yep.
We got it staked out and you'd have to probably reserve it, yeah. So it does certainly add a feature that doesn't exist today that gives people, you know, let's just say a, a family reunion, birthday party, it gives people a facility to use there which doesn't exist now, so.
One thing, this is a regional park. We applied for it, Westerns, you know, before you guys were on board, knowing that this was coming in front of us. This is the only regional park we have in Benton County, you know, so.
Right, I mean, and within that definition of, that makes you eligible for legacy grants, right?
Right.
Yep.
You know, so to me, I I do believe we should look at this. What is, Commissioner Schlang?
Also, the, with the trails, if a a donor wants to donate, they can, it can be named after them and the building also, just for community input.
Features after whomever you chose to, yeah.
Playground.
Trail, playground, shelter.
Yep, and those could be in the works, you know, for the next two years.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, it's, what do we wanna do with this?
I, in my opinion, I think we should go for the gusto, like Mr. Pop said, and and uh I I I think we just gotta be creative in the next two years to to find some additional funding for it. And it, it's a scary thing to kick the can, if you will. But we don't have a lot of time to to get this, you know, half a million to a million dollars for the legacy, so.
Monty, in the motion, do you want it up to three hundred thousand then?
You know, I think uh, uh, Mr. Chair, it looks like the maximum that we would seek would be the two twenty-five.
Plus the seventy-five thousand.
No, that's in, that's included.
That's included?
That's included.
Okay, so now we're down to two twenty-five and seven three.
Two twenty-five.
There's our maintenance for five, seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so so the two twenty-five includes the fifteen percent local match and then the seventy-five for SRF's additional services.
Yep.
I was doing the math on that. Fifteen percent of a million is a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's gotta include the seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's where two twenty-five came in.
I took the paragraph to say in addition.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps a little. I feel a little bit better now.
That's, that's all, that's an all-inclusive number.
I'll make that motion to um, spend up to two hundred and twenty-five of the CIP fund uh to apply for these grants.
And I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Johnson? You're just happy it's at two twenty-five?
Yeah.
I'm happy we found seventy-five grand, just like that.
Just like that. We got two years to find it out.
We gotta count on your math a little better next time.
Okay, with the.
Um, donors would donate the money to the county to be used towards this.
Right, we can, yep, and that's something we can work on in the next couple of years, so. We'll deal with that on a later date. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
Monty.
Next, Commissioner Gopinski, discuss creating a city-county township-school district collaboration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I wanted, um, Monty to put this on the agenda. I think uh, I think through the whole broadband discussion, uh, we've made some good inroads with not only the cities but the townships. And one of the things that we've been running into is we're trying to set up individual meetings with townships to go over progress and and everything. I think it would be a great, um, I I know we we have every, every six months meetings with all the townships. But I think it would be great to have a committee that meets every two, three months with all the townships and the cities just to give them progress and what's going on, on anything, not just broadband. Just get get questions, concerns, um, thoughts from from all angles of the county to bring back to either the board or they can bring back to their boards. Um, I I think that would really uh help uh continue the relationships between the cities, the townships and the county.
So are you, are you saying that um we would have like a city rep from the cities and one from the township? I guess I would caution a little bit about opening it up to all the township, you know, like eat, let them designate one person or two people so that we don't have this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, what I was thinking is as one person from each township, one person from each city be the, be be on the, on the, on the board or on the committee.
Any.
It's really not a board, it's more of a committee just for informational purposes. We could treat it like a board just so people, there's minutes and stuff like that.
So are you talking about rotating through townships and cities or having them all at the meeting?
Having them all there, I mean, obviously it's not gonna be mandatory if somebody can't make, I make it. But at least it gives the ability for everybody to be in a room at a set time, whether that's five times a year, six times a year. But but we're, we're getting out to them more than just the, our commissioner updates on the, every six months. Which not all of them will come to that too.
Right, and you won't get them all to come, you know, but I think if you, if you let it up to the townships to designate or the cities to designate one person to attend, I think your attendance will be a little better.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
And you're thinking like a set meeting, for example, the second Monday of every month?
Correct.
Meet here and
Yep.
Those of you that can come, great, and it's kind of a town hall type thing.
Yeah, and I'm thinking every two to three months, because I don't think every month you need to meet.
Sure.
But every two to three, but it gives some repetition, it gives some more like, oh, I got this coming up in a few weeks, I don't have to act immediately. We can talk about it as a, as a whole there. And I think people feel a little bit more comfortable talking as a, as a whole instead of attacking things individually. Just a thought, I would, I would offer myself up to be the county rep on that for the first goal.
Sure. Get it all set up. I think something we could do is have, you know, we can do two without, you know, have a couple of commissioners, but alternate them out, you know, as as we go.
Yep.
I'm happy to start it too, if you're whoever else wants, I'd be happy to sit in.
And then alternate throughout the year, that would give, they get a chance to see everybody then?
Absolutely. No, that would work.
So I will just throw this at you. I I know Monty sent you Scott County, I think it was, that has this.
Yep.
We would probably look at what they're doing and set it up that way.
Yep.
Sounds good.
I think it, I think it would give a lot of inroads on to what townships are thinking, what cities are thinking, what the counties are thinking instead of everybody thinking we know what they're thinking. You know, and and that comes from all angles.
Monty, is this something that could be addressed and brought back to the board next meeting, or will this take longer to?
Um, maybe I could ask a question. Did you, did your, was your intention to include school districts in this or not?
It could be.
Oh, I I I I.
I'd never, I guess I never thought of that, but.
Okay. Maybe I, I thought I heard that when we were talking about it, but maybe not. I could have misunderstood.
Not a bad idea. I don't think it's gonna hurt.
No, it ain't, it's not gonna hurt, no.
You can always open the potato out there. Do we have to set up some guidelines and perimeters and everything for all of this? So this is gonna take a little bit.
It'll take, yeah.
Mr. Chair, you don't want it to turn into a bitch session.
No.
Exactly, yeah.
We want ideas.
I'm glad that was plainly stated.
Yeah.
Well, there's not really any other ways around it.
I'm sure Jacob will uh.
Yeah, could you fine tune that a little, Jake? Parentheses, Commissioner Pop.
Uh, so.
Can we sugarcoat that?
So, Monty, is this something you and Commissioner Gopinski will be working on to draft up something?
Uh, we can.
Or or Commissioner Gopinski?
I, I definitely. Yeah, I definitely will assist, of course, yeah.
And probably look at Scott County, what they're doing and.
I know, they've been in existence for a long time and they're actually quite formal.
Really?
Okay, so it probably would take a long time to get to that level. I think they even do some joint services together.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah.
I think to start out, the informality would be great.
Yep.
With our townships and cities.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And if it doesn't fly, we just discontinue it.
Discontinue, correct, yeah.
I think there's gonna be a lot of buy-in. I really do.
Okay.
I, I think the cities, I think, I I, I I think uh, the cities are, have been looking for a way to to work together on things and stuff like that, so. I I, I don't think we're gonna have a hard time getting people there and and getting input.
I was also thinking about uh, BEP being involved in this. Do you think, any, 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 any value in BEP being involved?
Certainly.
Yeah, certainly.
Yep, they can.
Some of those questions may be directed.
The, the, the thing with BEP, when you're talking about townships, uh, one of the things that is coming up on the broadband side of things is townships don't really understand at times what what broadband can do for their township, let alone, you know, how much it costs to get it, so. Uh, I I think BEP would be a great person, great committee, um, person to be on, on that.
Okay, okay.
Panel.
So it sounds like. So it sounds like Commissioner Gopinski actually confer at some point, there would might be like a letter going out to township cities. Uh, introducing, inviting and so on, okay.
Yeah, I I would get together and throw something together.
I suppose at some point, you know, the board will just is gonna have to just set a date, time and place, and it's just gonna have to work.
That's right.
It works, it works, it doesn't, it doesn't, but. Can you imagine trying to get coordinated?
No, we we just gotta pick a date.
You know what I really like about it is that sometimes it's hard to get to your townships because they're on the same nights. So you don't get the opportunity to get to each one all the time, so that's, I like that.
That might be one thing you probably got to look at is city council meetings, township meetings.
Yeah, double check that calendar.
For the majority, you know, if you stay towards the end of the month, you're better off.
And Monday nights might be good.
Commissioner Schlangen, you had something you're gonna talk about or about this?
Not just with the BEP, then, you can look at bigger projects to do in the area.
Okay, so got a consensus on this, and you'll move forward, Commissioner Gopinski, and bring it back to the board and. We'll move forward after that, right? This will take a little bit of time.
It'll take some time, but.
Okay, great. With that, I'll turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Heinon. All right, we'll call our Human Services Board to order, um, Bob, anything to add?
I have one item to subtract.
That never happens.
And what item would that be?
I would like to subtract, consider the, uh, Community Health Improvement Plan. That was something that, uh, Jaclyn was going to present and she was not able to make it today.
Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, is there a motion?
So move, Mister Mister Chair.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve our amended agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, carried, move on to a consent agenda, one item on there, what are your wishes?
So moved.
Second.
In a second, all those in favor? Posed. All right, Bob, we'll move on to approving a stipend for a CHS Administrator attendance at NACO Annual Public Health Conference.
All right, Jaclyn has been here ab- about a year now, actually, I think in July, beginning of July, it'll be a year. And she has taken on the CHS Administrator role as well. Uh, one of the things that, uh, with COVID and so forth, she just hasn't had a lot of training, in fact, she's had almost none other than. Some local collaboration with other, uh, supervisors. Uh, I would like to authorize having her go to this conference, it gives a, an an overview. Of what public health is and the big picture of public health and so forth. Uh, she did, uh, get awarded a two thousand dollar stipend, as well as the, anything remaining. Would be able to be paid by the, um, grants and the non-vaccine grant. So it shouldn't cost anything for the county, but I do want her to go ahead and take this this conference, and it's in Atlanta, Georgia, I think it was. So I want to do a request approval, and I do, um, agree with this training, I think it'd be good for her to have some higher level. Uh, training, so.
I'll make that motion, I agree.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve, um, attendance to that conference, is there any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. Uh, Bob, move on to considering approval for public health to apply for up to three public health, AmeriCorp, public health project coordinators.
All right, one of the things that, uh, came along here is, uh, public health Americorps, uh, is offering a program where. They will cover the salary and benefits of the these positions and. We are suggesting that we could keep three people busy, uh, and. One of the things that I asked Jaclyn right away is how can we keep this person, the these persons busy and first of all, I don't think we necessarily get three. But I think for the first year here, we could certainly keep three people busy fairly easy. And it would be very little cost to the county, there is a potential for some cost, but they're telling us now that it won't happen. But me being the pragmatic I am, I I still think that that it's possible. But the idea is that they would be able to help with, uh, the last few years, we've had our people re-delegated to COVID and so forth. So we haven't gotten a lot of the things we want to done in our chip program, as well as our ship programs and so forth, but. So this, these people would be able to come in and help us get caught up on that. Some of the other things that are, uh, that I would expect these people to do is we are in in the midst of working with. A collaboration with the other four counties with the co- uh, communities of excellence work. And that'll also involves Saint Cloud and some of the other, uh, private partners. And that is a a bit, an effort to bring a baldridge model to Saint Cloud to help Saint Cloud. Help them with some of the problems that we face, stigmas and so forth. So we we could definitely use somebody to plug into that role. The other thing is helping build up our other public health programs. And being able to provide some of those things like focused outreach and dental varnishing and things like that. Excuse me, yesterday you heard about the tobacco ordinances, there's a lot of of work to be done on that as well. And then the third thing would be to, uh, we are getting a an opioid funding. For the next eighteen years and and Monte and I talked about that this morning. The idea that we had a, um, webinar yesterday afternoon. And it was about a two-hour, what we can do and what we can't do with this eighteen years of opioid, yeah, opioid funding. And why what what I would propose would be that since public health has been taxed with overseeing this, these funds. This would be a perfect opportunity to bring one of these other people, one of these people in here. To help us develop a plan on how we can use that, how to best structure that, what other plans are available and so forth, so. Uh, as I said, as of right now, there is no, uh, cost to the county. And I would like to look at being able to do this. I don't believe we'll be able to get all three, but if we did, we'd keep busy. But then as we continue to go forward, that's not, we wouldn't necessarily take all three for the next three years, that's. Potential of nine people, but I don't see that happening, but anyway, uh, and the other side of the. One of the things that Monte and I have talked about for years is the idea of developing a farm system. And this would be an opportunity, we have such a hard time getting public health people in in Benton County here, so. This would be able to bring people in on the ground floor, we'd be able to see how they work and so forth and. Perhaps some of these people would like to be Benton County employees, so I just don't see a downside to approving something like this, so. I would ask that the board approve us going after this, uh, opportunity.
Bob, just to clarify, I understand you're saying no estimated cost at this time, but if there is. Do you have additional grant funding that would cover that, or where do you see, okay?
We we habitually unders- underspend our grant funds, every year we underspend them because we just don't have a real lot of. Uh, infrastructure built up in our public health and something like this would help us to bridge that gap.
So no levy dollars will be needed, even if there's some cost?
That would be correct.
Mister Chair. Monte, how much are are we getting per year for opioid?
If you spread that over the, it's about eighty-three thousand over the over the course of, over the course of the eighteen years. Yeah, that's an average, if I recall correctly, you're supposed to get more in the earlier years and then it trails down.
It's front-ended.
I have not, this this, I was doing actually a webinar yesterday and we, they haven't nailed down the specific exact dollar amount. Nor when we'll get the first installment, apparently it's supposed to be late summer. So I guess we'll know a little more details later this summer, but average about eighty-three thousand over the span of, you said eighteen, yeah, eighteen years.
Mister Chair. One of the things I wanted to bring up is is I know that there's gonna be a lot of people with their hands out with the opioid. Settlement, I I actually came to the board, was about a month and a half ago on the, uh, our, our, uh, yeah, our. EM, Emergency Management or Emergency Medical Services Board. Uh, uh, for funding, because that's all funded off of seat belts and obviously that's going away, so we're. We're tasked with trying to find out additional ways to fund that, i- if if we, if the state doesn't fund it, we're still gonna end up having to have it.
I guess what I'm hearing though is you're not necessarily proposing that that's where those additional funds come from, there's other grant dollars.
No, let let me, uh, explain, part of the opioid is that that those funds are gonna come and and Monte said they could be. I I don't remember exactly which fund they'll be put in, but the idea of of us, we just simply didn't have the infrastructure. To handle this, you know, even though they give us money, we still have to have somebody to put in that role. So this is why something like this makes a lot of sense, because that salary is already paid. So we can use those funds for something else versus hiring a person for the next eighteen years. So it's it's something that we must develop a plan of how we're gonna use this funding, where it goes. What, uh, applications we use it for and so forth, so. Go ahead.
I need to add something, I know I learned yesterday is that, uh, we're supposed to use these funds. In a in a manner consistent with the terms of the settlement. And so I got a copy of the settlement and you kind of scan down through it, it's things like opioid treatment, prevention. And it says that your your local public health department is is supposed to be the lead agency. In developing a plan on how these resources are used, so I just wanted to throw that out there is that. It it's, it it seems fairly detailed and fairly prescriptive about how the resources can be used. And I know, uh, I also learned we're required to report to the state, I believe, on some periodic basis on how we've used the resources, so. I guess it's important that we we study this agreement, this settlement carefully and make sure we're using in accordance with it, so.
All right, any other questions or is there a motion?
At the end of the three years, um, these people would just go away, or would they be part of the county at that point?
You know, this is something that we've we've dealt with other times as far as Americorps providing this resource. And sometimes it's over here, sometimes it's over there, so I wouldn't count on it, but it's not a cost to us anyway, but I think the idea is that. This would be able to allow us to, if you will, stockpile some of those opioid resources. Because we are not having to pay for a salary to manage those. So I think it's a situation where, yep, three years, if if I get a free employee for three years or three free employees for three years. I'm gonna take it, because I think it we're still better off than what we would have in a case where we had to hire somebody or something like that.
My my scare is is those three people at the end of three years becomes.
Love our employees.
And they don't ever go away.
No, that can't happen. I'm hoping that they will become our employees and will come on our payroll, but through the normal process of hiring. So that's, that's.
Through attrition or additional?
Attrition.
Any other comments?
These, these are AmeriCorp employees.
May may I ask, may I ask, so Bob, technically, are they a Benton County employee or are they?
They're Americorp employees. Salary and benefits are paid.
I was trying to tie the knot here.
I'm like.
So that's why I say it's it's really a situation where it's a no lose for us, somebody pays their salary and benefits for three years and. We use their skills.
And grant dollars that you already have.
And maybe stockpile some of the opioids, opioid settlement.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Benton County Public Health to apply for up to three public health, America Corps.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried, anything else, Bob?
One minor quick update, uh, we talked about yesterday about the homeless situation and, uh, Monte, uh. I got an email and I sent it to Monte about, uh, the communities are starting to talk about pulling to get, uh, people together. So I I sent it to Monte this morning, so I think it was, it's good, uh, Commissioner Heinon, you are also privy to that as well, so. It's good that the community itself is starting to, uh, move together toward figuring out what we need to do as a, as a community versus as county, separate counties. Just a note.
Commissioners, anything else for Bob? All right, we'll adjourn our Human Services Board and I'll turn it back over to our board chair.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, we'll reconvene our regular board meeting now. Chris Berg. Consider administrative agreement with the City of Rice to build a trail.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. Hopefully, uh, you've had some time to look at this, a- and we talked about it before, uh, Rice submitted for a trail for some. A grant for, uh, it's a federal grant to construct this trail, so. We would need an administrative agreement between us, uh, and the City of Rice. Because the federal money will come from the state of Minnesota to us. And, um, this is, the way the agreement's written right now is very similar to how. A recently approved agreement was between Benton County and the City of Foley for the exact same thing, they received some federal money to. To construct a trail along Highway twenty-three, uh, on the south side of town. So in s- in in general, the agreement is written and set up right now that, uh, we would receive the federal money. Um, the city would hire their own engineer to do all the preliminary engineering work and prepare construction plans. We would take those construction plans, um, make sure that they get approved through the state aid system, um, so it's all eligible for federal money. And then we would host the bid opening and bid letting, and then we would hold the construction contract with the successful bidder. And we would be making intermediate payment to the contractor and then turning around and invoicing the City of Rice. For any of those additional costs or the costs that they're responsible for above the the grant award amount. So we know there's always a, a local share, um, uh, could be, it's at least eighty percent. It could be more if the way prices are, because that federal money sometimes gets locked in now, once they come up with the plans and an estimate. They could be on the hook for maybe a little bit more than twenty percent of the project. So that's in general how the agreement is set up currently. Hasn't been shared with Rice, but I wanted to bring before the board and, uh, while you have any opportunity to comment or or question the agreement. There is a little bit of administrative, you know, on our side to administer that contract and hold that, um. And that's something maybe it's worth discussing, how do we, uh, handle that with the City of Rice? Right now, those kind of costs aren't discussed in this agreement, it's just the construction costs. It does make it clear that the engineering costs are the city costs, those are not, um, county costs. And then, of course, any of the construction costs above the grant amount would be the city's.
Mister Chair, Chris, do you have an idea of our administrative costs on this?
Um, no, there are some general guidelines a- and, um. What I what I know recently, we've been, I've been discussing with the, uh, state of Minnesota, uh, on a similar type thing where, uh. They use three percent, um, on any cost participation, when there's a trunk highway. Um, and we have a county road that intersects a trunk highway and we have some costs in that project. They use three percent is about an average cost for just administration. Uh, construction inspection is sometimes in the range of eight to ten percent of those construction costs. So I don't know exactly, I mean, that's maybe, we may have five, six thousand dollars. Um, based on what the construction or the grant award amount is, I guess, three percent would be about six thousand dollars. So I don't really know what actual cost, I imagine it'd be similar. I know in general, when we have a construction project and we do all the administration, construction, inspection, the preliminary engineering. Our costs are about twelve percent of the total construction costs, so. This project, I guess one thing I failed to mention, thank you for asking that, because that reminded me. Uh, inspection of the construction work would be expected to be a city cost as well. Most often, they use the same engineering consulting firm that prepared the construction plans, so. I'm not proposing and we really don't have the staff resources to provide inspection services for them, so.
And if I could, Mister Chair, Chris, uh, what did we do with the City of Foley, do you recall?
We didn't, we didn't have any administration discussions as part of that agreement. I just think it's maybe worth, at least broaching that subject, everybody's administrative costs have gone up significantly in the past year, so.
So this is just for discussion and then a consensus from the board?
Yeah, if the board, if there's a consensus that the agreement's good the way it is, I would proceed with. Sending it to the City of Rice and asking them to consider it and approve it and sign it and then bring it back, um. As a consent item for signatures, so I'm not asking for formal approval, I guess at this point, but, um, maybe a general consensus.
We have any more questions for Chris? Otherwise, general consensus, uh, Mister Commissioner Pop.
The way it sits right now, the county would have to pick up to six grand?
Well, yeah, that would, uh, that's, I I'm I'm hoping that's an overestimate of just our. Well, yeah, that would, uh, that's, I I'm I'm hoping that's an overestimate of just our administrative costs of preparing um a bid letting, opening bids, bringing it to the board here for um approval of the bids and awarding your construction contract, executing the contracts, uh, generating those monthly payments to the contractor for completed work, um, those kind of things.
I, Mr. Chair, I guess, um, maybe it's kind of late in the game to change the way we do business now, but maybe we need to look at this in the future if we're gonna be administering more and more of these out.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pop, what what did you think about? I understand late in the game, but Rice hasn't seen this yet.
Well, but they probably, they've done, we've done something else with the city of Rice and the city of Foley, they probably assume that.
Yeah, they know a agreement is coming and we've done things, yeah, in the past like this, so.
Some point, we maybe gotta start, maybe it's havesies.
We need to have a discussion that
I think these discussions have to start now instead of later.
Yeah.
And so as this process works for applying for it, uh, usually these applications are due around the first of the year. I guess I would do my best to encourage these these smaller entities to work on that application a little bit sooner because it does seem like it's the end of December, they they'll have to come to the board to get a resolution of support and project sponsorship. It seems like maybe at that time of submitting the application, it would behoove us to have those discussions. It's like, yeah, well, maybe we'll sponsor your project, but we need to talk about, you know, administering those kind of things.
I think we almost gotta go with this one the way it is right now, just so we're not going backwards. But I I think I think moving forward, we need to uh have those conversations right away and then then we can sponsor it.
Sure, because, yeah, they can't submit that application without
That's right, so e- even now I would start that process.
Yep.
And it's a real cost.
It is.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a cost.
They add up.
Okay, we have a consensus then for Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Next, MINDOT Construction Partnership Agreement. Yeah, go ahead. Chris?
All right, so um, the broadband, uh, you know, subcommittee, we had a meeting with MINDOT last week to talk about uh cost participation and um, yeah, make sure that they still are on board with with moving forward with this uh fiber project between Saint Cloud and Foley. And I think what we heard at that meeting on last Thursday was, yeah, they still will participate in the construction uh costs of this. So what we have here in front of us, um, I was gonna bring it up on the the computer, uh, is an agreement between the state of Minnesota and Benton County for them to participate in the the construction cost to pay for their items in the um, on the construction plans. Well, it was reviewed, I did have it reviewed by the county attorney's office, so they're okay with it i- in its current form. I do think it's worth pointing out some of the, you know, the big thing is the cost. And so if we go down to section six here, they have analyzed some estimated quantities and some estimated unit costs. And I'll point out that that's based on two thousand and twenty-one average bid price, probably maybe statewide. I think we all know things are a lot more expensive this year than they were a year ago and our our engineer, S E H, is working on an estimate. And I think we already see that this is probably gonna be higher than this. Section six point two, they say the maximum obligation of the state for the above services is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But it does go on to say if actual costs cause the project to exceed this amount, an amendment to this agreement will will need to be executed. So I think we heard a willingness to participate on actual costs and if bid costs are above that, uh, I believe that MINDOT will will commit to whatever those costs were. It just means that if we open bids and it's over three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, we'll need to sign an amendment to this current agreement. They're working in a fiscal year that ends at the end of this month. So I I think it's beneficial for us to go ahead and get this agreement signed on both sides. So so we're locked into an agreement that there will be some cost participation, knowing that there's a pretty good chance we may have to amend this agreement later when bid prices are, or even our engineer's estimate comes in.
Mr. Chair.
I'll have to rely on Commissioner Gopinski and Commissioner Johnson on this one.
I think uh, I I think we vetted this pretty, pretty well. I was gonna say something else, but I know Jacob's here. But uh, uh, no, we vetted this very, very well and I appreciate all your help on this, Chris, because uh it it was, it was a challenge and it was some misinterpretations and stuff like that, so uh, I think, go ahead.
I just, I know this addresses the construction, but maybe Chris could also address how our discussion about design, sharing the design costs, which will be addressed in a separate agreement.
Maybe before you go to that, Chris, I just wanna highlight the fact that they, you know, talking about fiscal year, they have these funds there that they need to spend.
Yes.
And they will lose them.
Fiscal year, or they will lose them.
And then MINDOT signing this before the end of this month commits those funds to this project. So that was kind of, kind of critical um that we acted on at this meeting, so.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so so design, so we talked about till, so I don't know if you recall last week, we had a ma- master partnership agreement approved and that allows us to purchase materials and sometimes testing services. We um, in that agreement, authorized the county engineer to to authorize uh or sign task orders to purchase those. So we, I already signed a task order for MINDOT to commit to some of the engineering costs on this project. We talked to them uh on Thursday as well about more of those engineering costs because there's a lot of upfront legwork that we paid our consultant to do, I should say. Preliminary survey, topographical survey, those kind of things. There's a lot of, you know, just basic costs that whether we did the project or MINDOT had the project uh would have had to um pay for, I suppose. So I, we did hear willingness to increase uh their participation on the design side of it. Uh, I went back to our consultant on uh last week and kind of had them break out, you know, where we are on those task orders right now that uh I will share with MINDOT. I I think we were, we heard that maybe, yeah, fifty percent uh on some of those earlier tasks seems reasonable. So either one of us would have had those costs if we were standing alone and we 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 do have a commitment, I think, that we're partners in this going forward.
Mr. Chair, and I I shout out to MINDOT, I mean, that's a a good collaborative, we were able to come to an agreement on, if we can get fifty fifty on our design costs.
Absolutely.
I agree.
That's a plus.
So, yeah, so I think there'll be another task order, um, where there may be, I don't know, that was, that was the thing that was kind of unsure. It seemed like uh representatives there Thursday wasn't sure if that could be handled with a task order, if it would be another formal agreement to do that, but
Chris, did you find, are we at sixty percent or did you find out from our engineering where we're at on the task?
Yeah, we're about, I think, take sixty percent overall in the contract, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair. One of the, one of the notes that did come out of this meeting was uh the reason why MINDOT couldn't use our fiber, they want to put their own in and and it becomes more of a more of an engineering or or a, I'm gonna say, an application-based reason. They use air-blown fiber, which is completely different than what we're using uh as the armored, you know, direct berry. So they they tend to put in the air blown so they can change it out every time. It is more expensive, but uh they've got reasons for that.
And Mr. Chair, if I could expand on that, I think their long-term plans, obviously, digital billboarding, cameras. What's the word I want for car, uh, monitoring car?
Traffic control.
Oh, they talked about connected and automated Eventually, probably tying in the traffic signal at twenty-five and twenty-three to a a central center that connects to Saint Cloud, so um they could be
There's a lot, yeah.
So.
Oh, wow.
And just playing policy on how they do things, right? They weren't gonna change for our project, which I get.
I think there's potentially some collaboration on vaults if needed, um, but we'll get down that road later on.
Okay, great.
And there's certainly collaboration on construction.
Yes.
So.
Yep.
That was good. Okay, what do you want to do with this item?
Uh, this is informational, correct?
No.
No, I wouldn't hope to get an emotion to approve the authorized signatures.
I'll, go ahead.
I don't have it in front of me.
All right, I'll move to approve the MINDOT agreement that our county engineer presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, sorry, Scott, so long of a meeting. New public street connection into Cassad thirty-three and Sartell. Chris?
All right, well, thank you for adding this to to the agenda. Uh, yeah, uh, we have Scott Sayer from the city of Sartell here. We had a meeting just yesterday to talk about uh a possible new street connection um onto Benton Drive. It's known as First Avenue at this point. It's at the old uh paper mills site. And and the reason I think uh it's worth bringing to the board, as we talked about it, some of the things that are happening there, there's gonna be some agreements in place with the city and a developer. And and it it started to feel like, well, maybe we don't have a a relationship with a developer. But there's some things that are being done uh on the city's behalf or the city is uh accomplishing here that maybe it may lead to an agreement between Benton County and the city as it pertains to the access to the public roadway that that we maintain. I- in short, uh, there is a desire to move this access point. This is the, right here is where uh the original access point was to the office building, the employee parking lot. Um, and then there was, you know, private, private roadway owned by the paper company that crossed the railroad tracks to get to where the old plant was on the west side of the tracks. Um, there is a church that's operating in this. And so there's a desire to allow for parking closer to the building and not on the opposite side of what uh presumably will be a public street someday that that crosses from Benton Drive over to the tracks and across the tracks. So um, the intent, I guess, would be, or what the the city would desire to close this and create a new access point onto um Benton Drive at this this location. There's some spacing requirements that the the city would, is willing to meet from the signalized intersection here. I do have some additional traffic flow concerns um based on now we don't have a lined up intersection, we have kind of a mid-block access. And left-turning movements are kind of a concern for me. So if you would like to talk to Scott, we could have him come up. I just wanted to bring it up as just to to introduce the topic to you. I think it warrants some more discussion at a at a work session. As I was preparing for this, I I realized, we'll talk about this later, we have a road tour next week. This may be something we can talk about on our road tour or certainly stop by there and look at it, at the situation ourselves. But I do want to introduce this and not expecting a formal approval or action at today's meeting, so.
Okay, Scott, would you like to approach the board?
Thank you, Chris. Uh, again, my name is Scott Sayer with the city of Sartell, community development director. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just mostly am here for providing some information from the city of Sartell standpoint, as well as just some of the interactions we've had with Chris currently, as well as uh some of the the priorities from the city, as well as I would believe the county from an economic development standpoint and just some information on that specific site. So some of the challenges that we are coming uh forward with in in communications with Chris is there is currently one access, there used to be two accesses across uh the railroad tracks with B N S F. Uh, unfortunately, the current owner and user of this specific site, the Verso site, has closed one of those entrance points to the north, I believe it was off Eighth or Eighth or Ninth um to the north of this actual location. So therefore, we're we're, and working with B N S F, there are many challenges to try and negotiate additional access points and things like that, so we've come to terms from a a a city staff level as well as our our city council members understand the fact of you know, prioritizing this specific location across the tracks, as well as uh setting this specific site up for success. So again, going to the the bigger piece of um why I'm here is is more so just being able to interact with with both Chris as well as the commissioners and and understand that we're hoping to find some term of agreement that we can uh compromise on in order to make this a developable site. There are many challenges there currently with, uh, there's concrete structure there, there's there's stockpiling on that specific site. We're gonna be dealing with um a current user that actually is the dam, as well as the current user that's on the east side of the tracks. Um, as as Chris mentioned earlier, there's this a church user at that specific site. I'm sure many of you commissioners know um the user there as well. We would like to mitigate a lot of the safety concerns that we have from a city standpoint that highlight moving that access point and and bringing that parking lot, especially when there's you know, the the more higher need for drop-off points and stuff um and and handicap uh accessible parking and things like that. We'd like to keep that parking in front of that building as well as um highlighting the simple fact that after that turnoff of Third, um, or First Avenue and and the intersection of Third Street, there's, that's private from that point on and onto the track. So really, the the track, um, railroad track access point is private, as well as the the road going in and and crossing to the west side. So really, we're, we're at a point right now currently as a city in in negotiations with the current current owner of this site, AIM Development, I'm sure many of you know that that term, uh, it's been used often. And those really have been closed meetings between the city attorney as well as just the litigation process that has gone for a number of years and and many dollars have been spent, but we're at a point now where the city is really trying to uh continue those negotiations and and come to a an agreement to uh potentially either get a developer at that site or take over that site for uh future economic development use. Uh, we, I mean, this has even hit legislative points as far as conversations and how we can move this site. There's a many, many different benefits, um, but also there's a couple cons that we need to work through to get there. So from my standpoint and and on behalf of staff and council for the city of Sartell, we're we're here trying to propose the the option of how we can work together to to have an accessible site to cross those tracks, understanding that there are gonna be some negotiations and and compromise again. But really looking for board approval to work with Chris and identifying an appropriate site um for that access. Any questions?
Any questions for Sarah?
Mr. Chair. Scott, were you able to use any of your mediation skills? Uh, I had the privilege of uh going through that mediation course with Scott and his
He put up with you for those
He did, he did.
Wow. Good for you.
Up with is a great term. I did not have to use any of my mediation skills, but they're in my back pocket.
Perfect.
Okay, so Chris, you'll be working with Scott then and
Well, yeah, so
With us.
Commissioners, I just want to clarify why I think that maybe Italy, uh, Scott mentioned it, there are some agreements and the city's working really hard with the uh current owner, maybe a developer, I don't know. The county probably isn't appropriate to be a third party. As we talk about, the the city's doing a lot of work and doing a good job of planning for the future. It was mentioned that some of this stuff may get to an agreement today that may not be constructed until some point in the future, and that's where it felt like, well, okay, now we're talking about access onto a public road that we we oversee, maybe we need to be in agreement with the city, so
Yeah.
So we're all on the same page and not have to be a party to what they're working on uh on their own side.
Yep, keep it separate. Yeah, okay, so we'll be working on this in the future and is there a time timeline, timeframe?
Probably yesterday.
I mean, everything's yesterday.
Scott?
So, Mr. Chair, one of the, one of the challenges that we've been dealt with is we've been going through a process of through negotiations with attorney, um, both their attorney, our attorney, we've been setting deadlines. I mean, unfortunately, June is another deadline and we're trying to push that out further, so proactively trying to come to a conclusion for identifying that access point, and I should have clarified that a little earlier. But also, one of the the things that is required from the city of Sartell within that uh purchase agreement is that we need to identify a road right-of-way in that specific area, as well as plats, we're looking to plat the current user on the east side of the tracks, outlot the the remaining portion primarily on the west side of the tracks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Just a couple of questions, Scott, the um, is this a Bronzefield site that we looked at?
This is one of them.
One of them.
But we didn't get the grant, so.
We didn't get the, yeah.
And then also, uh, the church itself, do they actually own that? Are they renting that facility?
So currently, I believe there are, and Commissioner Heinon, you might know a little bit more, but currently, it's my understanding that they're renting it and the plan is to, I believe that they have a purchase agreement that's between um current owner and current user. The city has not been a party in that.
Okay.
So my understanding is yes, but they're really pushing to purchase that site as far as I understand.
And just to clarify, you mentioned that the west side of the tracks, you're looking at an outlot?
At at this time until further development is proposed or
Sure.
Different, obviously, uh, ways of how we can improve that site would be determined, then we would lot that accordingly.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Schleyen?
So they're proposing to take that street out and make it a parking lot. So they'd need the entrance on the south side to work with that to get into the whole facility?
Correct, so the
It's privately owned.
The proposal from the city is that the current access, it does very much so look like an actual public street from turning off of First Avenue. But that private roadway would then would be reconstructed to be a parking lot with different access points on the new proposed road. And again, that road would really be the primary point of connecting First Avenue to the lot across on the west side of the tracks.
Commissioner Pop?
Do we have potential interested people in that lot?
Not necessarily at this time. We've been having conversations at different EDAM conferences, things like that. There's interest, I think, always on that specific site. There has been in my term as Community Development Director. But I think the bigger pieces is really understanding where access is and that railroad track. That's always a very hot topic whenever there's interest in that specific parcel across the west side.
Chris, I got a question for you with that. You know, I know you'll be working with the City of Sartell about this entrance and everything. Is there an option, and I'm just going to throw this out there, a right way or?
Right in?
Right in, right out. Is that something that has been brought up yet?
Yeah, we talked about that. But I think the desire, because of whatever potential future use is, the city really would like a full access. It's still on the table, was thrown out. I mean, my concern is the, you know, weird sightlines. And you have people coming out of this street that's not lined up with an intersection and somebody wanting to go in the opposing direction and cross. It brings into this street this conversation. And there seem to be a little bit of interest in the city wanting to look at that and what can they can do to improve things at this intersection that may be, maybe an option, make this a right in, right out, so you don't have the left turn movements that would conflict with this intersection. Once again, today, day one, may not be a problem. I think we're all trying to plan for the future. And I think ideally, something comes in, develops, it creates all kinds of traffic, economic development and stuff. And then, you know, what if we have an issue 15 years down the road? And we could have foreseen that. So it's just, it's managing it for today and for tomorrow.
We have to explore all of our options, knowing that something big or a lot of development could happen in that area with a lot of traffic flow.
Mr. Chair, the good thing that we have there is that is a lower mile per hour area. Is that 30?
Correct, yep, that's 30.
It's posted at 30. That's why I wanted to clarify, it's posted at 30, doesn't mean everybody's traveling that speed, but.
Also coming off a posted 50, isn't it?
South of the signalized intersection is 50 mile an hour.
Which is supposed to be a mile down the road, but whatever. Okay, is there anything else you need from us, Chris, on this or just discussion or Scott?
I was just hoping to just open up the discussion and make you aware. Like I said, I think we will maybe make a stop here and show everybody on our road tour and discuss it then too.
Scott, got something to add?
Sure, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would love to attend if that's something that is open to our jurisdiction to stop by when you're at the site. I'll definitely be available if that's something the Commissioners, as well as Chris, would want. But at this point, I guess, just looking for direction again, just for clarification from my understanding, so I can bring back to staff and our legal, in regards to just the overall high level, is that commitment there to work through a full access site? So we can continue negotiations with the Verso site owner. And maybe that was, and Chris, maybe you want to jump in. But I also want to add that more than likely, our Public Works Director drives that road and he's probably going over 30, so I'll make sure he's aware of that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
From my side.
I know the Public Works Director, he's going, and him and I both travel this intersection every day, but we're going in opposite directions, so.
From my side, I would like to see whatever we could do as a board to work with the City of Sartell to make this happen.
I have to agree, this is in my district, so, excuse me. I want something to happen here too and make it work.
I would agree, I think we got to do what we can do to work together and figure it out, have some negotiations on it.
Chris?
All right. Okay. I get the idea from the board. So yeah, I think what I do is I'll put together some things of what, from a county highway engineering standpoint, what we would like to see and then share that with the city and go from there.
I'll just, Mr. Chair, just want to add one more point is that we work at a very high level in regards to working with the county and engineering comments, as well as city engineering comments and other staff comments, fire access points. So we will definitely, we'll be in a lot of communication through that process and addressing the needs in regards to Benton's engineering requests.
With that, Mr. Chair, I think between all those engineering and all the ideas, you guys are going to come up with an excellent proposal here.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
Well, I do want to provide a brief update, if time permits.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention on the maintenance side, some of the things that we're working, maintenance this week, we're utilizing contractors to replace a number of entrance culverts. The goal, I think, this week is to get at least 10 entrance culverts replaced. And that's using about four different contractors, though, at various locations across the county. Meanwhile, our staff is still crack filling. If we can get enough crew together and good weather, we might be able to finish up our, consume the rest of our crack filling material this week. A little bit later, this week, this spring has been kind of goofy. We normally have our crack fill out by this time of year, so. We're also painting messages. And when I say we call it messages, usually those are stop aheads at intersections and the stop bars at stop signs. So that keeps two guys busy all day, every day. I do want to mention striping work. We still are planning on striping Casaw III and a couple of other locations in Sauk Rapids this summer. The big concern right now is the roundabout corridor, as we call it, from Highway 10 out to Lake Station. That was supposed to be completed last year. But due to COVID and all those supply chain issues, material, paint material was not available. Fast forward to today, it's a lot more expensive than it was last year. We've got material, we're just trying to schedule the contractor, get the contractor's schedule. It looks like that that's going to occur at night due to the roundabout, striping in the roundabout. We think and the contractor seems to agree that it's going to be safer to just close it down in the middle of the night when it's very low traffic volume, get in there and get it done before the morning. So kind of interesting, we're starting to feel more like a urban county when we have to do night work because the traffic volumes are so, so high, so.
Is there going to be an extra cost for that?
No, it's, it'll probably wrapped into the paint costs. Interestingly enough, we, our budget used to be able to get us about 100 miles worth of striping. So that's come about $1,000 a mile. So we're going to use up that $100,000 on this roundabout and a couple of the locations in Sauk Rapids and Sartell, just because of the material prices, so. Yeah, that's where we are doing.
You can't ever end on a good note, can you?
Oh, he's got a ways to go yet, listen.
Construction site, our Casaw III reclaim north of Gilman. They should finish paving tomorrow on the first lift. So by the end of the day tomorrow, we should have a hard surface for everybody to drive all the way to Morrison County. Then the goal, well, as of today, weather changes everything. They're going to jump on County Road 70, put the first base lift of County Road 70. That could be Thursday and Friday. Then go to 22 to put the top lift on 22, then repeat it also all over with the 3 and then 70. So we've got about a week, at least of paving to go on all those. Casaw 5, though, all the paving is complete, we just need the gravel shouldering. Even though we paved what was an eight-foot gravel shoulder out there, there's always a little wedge that you need to, we use gravel to transition back from the pavement top back to the existing ground line. So that's what they need to complete on County Road 5. Staffing wise, you may or may not have been aware, we had a resignation of engineering technician at the beginning of this month. Two weeks ago, we received a second resignation from another engineering technician. So right now, well, his last week is this week, but we'll be down to one engineering technician. We already had the position advertised for recruitment, received one application and interviewed that individual, impressive. He works for a county currently doing the exact same thing. So it's kind of an ideal candidate. He's going to have, we're working with him to try to get an offer and see if he'd be willing to come work for us. So kind of sad news there that we're down to one technician again. We had a really good group of individuals working for us, but no longer. I do want to mention Mayhew Lake. If you recall, we hired WSB to study Mayhew Lake Corridor from Highway 23 to north past the high school up to the Casaw 29. We have an open house for the public next Monday, starting at 5:00, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Sauk Rapids Government Center. So you're welcome to stop by. It's open to the public to get thoughts and inputs from the public of what they like to see on that corridor as we move through that process. So this is our initial public hearing, we have one more. But yeah, it's really to gather information from the community on what they'd like to see. The Sauk Rapids Government Center, starting at 5:00.
And we set that up because they have a council meeting that night, thinking we'd get more people there.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, I forgot about that, so.
Next Monday?
Next Monday, 13th, 5:00 to 7:00. Yep, put that, yeah. Commissioner Pop?
So when you did County Road 3 north of Gilman, did you come to an agreement with Wayne Starry?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, he's paying for additional, that gravel wedge, he's paying to have that filled in with blacktop. So he paying Night River directly for that, so. That was a different crew. The way their process works, they do mainline paving and then a second crew comes in and does all the driveways after that. And that's who did that, so.
He was quite adamant about getting that done.
Yeah, yeah, because he does maintain a nice premises.
Nice lawn, yeah.
So. The only thing I wanted to mention was our road tour. We have our road tour scheduled for next Tuesday, scheduled to start at 8:00. I wanted to make sure it was okay if we meet out at the Highway Department. I think I originally set it up to start here, but with all the construction and everything, and I was wondering if the Commissioner would be okay if I changed that to start at 8:00 from the Highway Department building. Plenty of room to park out there and things like that. And then I was just going to ask, are there any specific things that any of the Commissioners would like to see? I could try to put on the map on the.
Mr. Chair? Actually, there is, and it's part of one of my questions, County 50. So I'd like us to see that intersection out there. But also, the question is, where are we at with County 50 in discussion with the city's project?
Oh, sure, yep, okay, very good. Yeah, because we have numbers prepared for that. We'd like to see guidance from the board on what to do. So we've got several, you know, a couple of different options and what our estimate of those costs are.
So are we looking at a cowl for this or where are we at timeline so that we don't get messed up with County 50 in the city's project and 62?
Sure. Yeah, so I think we could have that discussion as part of the road tour. What's happened, and what happened last year too, we had a road tour and then we still had a subsequent cowl after the road tour to hash out the five-year plan before it got finally adopted at a regular board meeting, so.
I will not be Tuesday at the road tour, I've got prior commitments, I have to attend.
One last comment, just kind of a shout out to Chris. I was able to talk with him on the phone, but I met with Commissioner Pop out on County 70 a few weeks ago. And it was a good opportunity to talk through some options there about doing some corrections. I know that you guys kind of closed down a section of that road with concerns on that hillside with moisture and water and bubbling of the. And so through this long discussion, you know, he's able to incorporate, I'm not sure the technical word, but you pumped it full of concrete in that area that you had done in the past on County 22. And you were able to tie that to the County 3 project that's going on, to get them in there and kind of get a fast resolution, so appreciate that. Because there were some concerns from landowners there, even though it's in Commissioner Pop's district, I was able to get in on that.
Yeah, so in short, it was a full-depth reclamation. If everything goes well, you reclaim it, you let it sit for a little bit, and then you pave on top of that. Well, this roadway, and we knew that going into it, receives a lot of truck traffic. That's, it's a low-volume road, but the volume of traffic is heavy traffic. It was soft and it wasn't healing up. So we made the decision to close it to see if that would help. And ultimately, within a day, we realized that that wasn't going to get it. We, so we have to, we change ordered in cement stabilization. And it so happened that the, since this was tied to the Casaw 3 project, the same company that does the full-depth reclamation can do the cement stabilization. So we were able to coordinate that when they were planning on remobilizing anyways for Casaw 3, that they would just mobilize the 70 first, bring in the cement. And they use the same kind of machines that basically it just incorporates the powder cement that you would use in concrete into the base. So it uses the existing moisture and basically kind of makes a weak concrete underneath the gravel base. So once that sets up, we put the gravel back on top of it. And then, yeah, we're able to pave, so.
You know, and as Chris mentioned, one of our largest gravel pits, you know, the Letner pit up there, who does a lot of business in this county, uses that road. And that's that truck traffic that you're talking about. And with it being closed, of course, forced them onto the county line township, over to County 66, which we know kind of shape that's in. So it was really a plus in timing-wise how that worked out.
We had got a quote from the contractors to do a traditional more subcut, where you excavate all that material and then you put in a fabric and then a sand layer and gravel back on top. The cement stabilization, just because it worked out, was about $50,000 less to go that route than to do all the over excavation.
And it's going to get the road open back up.
Yeah, that was the big thing, time too. You can stabilize that and let it cure for a couple of days and open it to traffic again.
And we had some proof that it worked on County 22, which I think was big in my part.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yep, so thank you for that, appreciate your.
And I think, you know, we've got to kind of put shouts out to the people that contacted us with the concerns.
Absolutely, the timing just couldn't have worked much better.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
That's all I have at this time.
Great, thank you. Next, Commissioner Heinrich, discussion of possible acts on allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds to the city water, wastewater projects. Commissioner Kapinski and myself have been working with the City of Sauk Rapids last two, three months, probably, a lot of meetings about spurring development. And right now, we've come to a conclusion that the city has the opportunity to put additional 40 lots.
42.
42 lots open with assistance from us if we so choose to join. They would, it'd be a one-on-one match. Commissioner Kapinski, you want to add?
Basically, through our conversations, the City of Sauk Rapids is down to very minimal lots. And with these ARPA funds, I believe that a big goal of mine anyway is to spur development in all of our towns. And it just happens to be where the last couple of months, we've worked with the City of Sauk Rapids on this. As people know, development is very hard to do right now for housing because of infrastructure. And we can utilize some of these funds for that to move this along. With that said, City of Sauk Rapids is, I think, down to like 18. This would add 18 or 20 lots, somewhere in there. This would add 42, and they would get going pretty much immediately on the infrastructure.
Yeah, what spurred this is that Commissioner Kapinski and myself went to Otter Tail County three months ago, probably, right?
Yep, the big build.
The big build. And got information of how they did all of this stuff from 2019 moving forward. And this is how this actually got into conversations with us in the City of Sauk Rapids, of how we could work together and use some of our ARPA funds for this. They're asking up to $350,000, and the city's matching it too, to help developers. Commissioner Pop?
Well, I just was, I wasn't really, I guess I was a little bit shocked on the dollar amount. I was expecting it quite a bit, you know, when you talk city water, city sewer. I was thinking it was going to be excessively more.
Yeah, that's right.
We, both of us, both Commissioner Kapinski and myself. We, both of us, both Commissioner Gopinski and myself, too, I'll be honest, I was thinking it was gonna be close to five hundred thousand.
Oh, it was even higher than that.
Well, but remember, it's a one-one match. Whatever we put in, the city has to put in.
Right.
So it is a third party.
I'm all for that, but we just, you know, maybe if we're gonna do this, we need to maybe push some aside for if Foley comes or if Rice comes.
That's that's.
I mean, you know dang well when it's.
We know when this hits the paper, Foley and Rice.
I was gonna say, what about us?
Gilman should be too.
And Gilman. Yeah, and we, you know, we've talked about that and shared our opinions, of course, too. I mean, this is just not for the city of Sauk Rapids. I mean, this ARPA fund is to be used around the whole county.
And I think it's probably important to identify that that dollar match is not going to be the same everywhere.
No.
No, that's correct.
Got different needs, higher, lower, whatever.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, you just because you do spend three fifty here and you might have to spend five hundred someplace else or.
Right.
I mean, you know, just I look at what the the estimate or what you hear for the Gilman project is. I mean, there's no way that, you know, we can do, we can do a one-to-one match, and I don't think, you know, I was, I don't know how Gilman's gonna afford that, what they need to do.
And you're right, Commissioner Pop, every city's gonna be.
Yeah.
What their needs and everything are.
I just think it's important, as long as we go into it knowing that.
Right, that that somebody else is gonna come, too.
Yeah, the payback on this is relatively short.
Yeah.
When you talk about taxes for houses.
Right, yeah.
I mean, so not only do we get to use these funds to spur developments, we're actually getting it back very quickly in the end.
Say that's the gift that keeps on giving.
That's right. Yeah, I I maybe some point in time do we need to look at a dollar amount of, you know, we're we're looking at broadband when we get that a little closer. You know, something like this, and maybe we need to set some aside. So eventually, ARPA's gone and we didn't get around everybody, or how are we gonna?
Monty, how much do we set aside into our ARPA fund just for these projects?
Well, between Water Wastewater and Broadband, we have a, we have six million set aside.
Okay.
Right, so.
We've got some room.
We got some, we got some.
We've got plenty of room.
And this this plan that we, with the city of Otter Tail, it it's amazing what they put together. They they set this out in two thousand and nineteen, and they had a goal over five years to do five thousand new residents between apartments, between single-family, and all of this stuff.
How did they fund it?
Well, well, mainly through some some grants at before COVID. But then when COVID came, they're they're funding it through ARPA.
Yeah.
They're using their ARPA funds for this. And when we were up there, they were thirty-three percent through their new developments of their plan, even through COVID.
And and they've also had a three-way partnership along with the county, the city, and the developers.
You know, Otter Tail County's got a lot of fairly major cities in it. So did they utilize most of the cities?
They're using the cities.
No, but I mean, you know, like Fergus Falls, Purham.
All their cities are involved.
All of the cities kind of all York Mills, whatever.
So, you know, we're bringing this to you today to start the process.
Right.
For all the other cities involved, too. So what what the city of Sauk Rapids is looking for is a commitment from the board.
Do they have development commitments?
Yes.
They do.
They, actually, one developer is waiting.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's ready to, they're ready to rock and roll.
The the nice thing about this is is the, this sounds bad, but the quicker you spend it.
Sure.
The quicker they build, the quicker we get that money back.
Yeah.
So.
And this, I'm assuming you're talking about granting this to them. There's no, you know, at one time, we talked about putting some funds in and the payback.
We just granted and they.
Just grant.
But this is a one-to-one, so therefore.
So give me on the one-to-one. So we put, what is it, three fifty?
Three fifty.
Three fifty, the city puts three fifty, and it goes to the developer to get this done.
And then developers doing their portion, too.
He's evidently carrying the largest portion.
Yep.
Yes, he is.
Boy, has to be. I mean, I can.
And there's guidelines along how much they can sell them for and everything like that.
Yeah, so we'll have to get Michelle involved, unfortunately, to draw up a contract and everything, too.
I would say we could put the burden on the city to at least start out with an agreement.
Correct, yep, and we've talked about that.
Let the city start something.
And I told the city that it'll have to go through our, through Michelle.
I really believe this is a win-win for everybody.
I I think it's a good deal. I think we vented it. We know where we're gonna go. We've got some money to do, so I'll make that a motion if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, we're looking for a motion, but in the motion, I wanted to include up to three hundred and fifty because we got primary estimates of about three twenty-five, three thirty somewhere.
Okay, I'll make that a motion that we designate three hundred and fifty thousand, up to three hundred and fifty thousand for on a one-to-one match with the city of Sauk Rapids for development of forty-two lots roughly.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Monty, you got a question?
No, I'll just, I'll work with Ross to get an agreement in place, and that we come back and formalize this.
Right, yep.
This is gonna be good cuz we're gonna be talking to the city of Foley and the city of Gilman and some of this ARPA money.
Well, it's a good start.
It is a good start. Thank you for doing that.
It is. I'll tell you, this is, like you just said, we use this a lot. It's a gift that's gonna keep giving. Because without without this, there's there's a lot of areas that can't develop, and this isn't, this is statewide.
And is that what you've seen up in Otter Tail County? They had the same issues, you know?
They would have never been able to.
I'm familiar with Otter Tail County, and we see them, you know, they're a part of our MICA.
They are, yep.
Everybody I've seen up there is really good.
Commissioner Hein, I appreciate your comment about this is a county-wide deal. It's Sauk Rapids.
No, it's not.
Be dealing with everybody here, so.
Yeah, we've actually talked about.
Yep, starting up with Foley here.
Yep. So.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner, meeting updates. Who wants to start?
I can start.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, mine will be somewhat quick. Lots of broadband things.
Mine's gonna be shorter.
Yeah, lots of broadband meetings. We were in a hurry-up-and-wait, and a run Very Fast came up. So we got a couple of quick meetings today later on. But it, we're, the 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 deed grants came out and stuff like that that are ninety-five million dollars. So we feel we're in a good, good, good position here. We just gotta make sure we got the partners on board and and stuff like that. There's gonna be, there's a lot of work to do yet, but we we will know more this week or end of the week, so. So that's where we're at. I I think we had a combination of probably three or four, five broadband meetings since our last board meeting. Saint Georgetown meeting, that was all about broadband, ARPA. I dialed in on that. You can maybe give a little bit more, but that that went very good, I think. Let's see here, we had a meeting up in Duluth that Commissioner Hein and I went to. Let's see. And I think that's about it. Oh, Watap Town Hall on the on the.
Carco project?
Carco project that we're all at.
Pretty much all there.
So that's all I have at this point.
Okay, so I attended all the other meetings with Jared, too.
Well, that's easy, then.
So that was easy for me.
Great, I'll be happy to go next.
Tri-county solid waste, little bit of bad news there in regards to Ag Plastics. For the lack of an end market.
Yep.
No longer gonna be accepting Ag plastic. So it's gonna be a major, I believe, the direct Director Tim said we had three hundred and fifty customers. Does that sound right?
Yep.
That'll now not have Ag plastic.
Well, they they had to suspend because this Revolution Plastic quit taking it.
And all because of end market problems.
End market and contamination.
So it's gonna be an issue, and I can't wait for the phone to start ringing on that when they find, cuz there's some customers, farmers out there that actually take it up there on their own, too. And whether or not they're gonna take it yet is in question, so.
We have no market anywhere else for it to go?
Well, I think they're.
They have, they have some markets, but they're a little skeptical of signing an agreement with them.
By fly-by companies that come in and say, yeah, we'll take it.
Yeah.
Uh, we had that already once in a while, yeah.
Also, we are in further discussion, hoping to meet in August with the Pope Douglas Board in regards to this ongoing issue with the rate increases. So we're actually gonna try to meet with their board instead of just their executive director. So that's coming up in August. I mentioned the County Seventy thing again with Commissioner Pop and and Chris Bird. Yes, the meeting with, at the Saint Georgetown Hall with Saint George, Glendareto, and Maywood, all three townships showed up. And we had a very good discussion about their broad, their township ARPA monies. And both Glendareto and Saint George said, where can we send you the money? We want this done now. Maywood was very much on board, and I believe they're gonna be talking about that now at their June meeting to see what kind of dollars that they can set aside towards broadband. They certainly understand that those are three of the big townships in this county that need it the most. So I thought it was a very, very good meeting. I seem to be on board with that. It was both, again, both townships, where can we send the check and when can we send it? So they're ready to rock and roll. So that was, that was good news.
Huge, yeah.
Again, like Commissioner Gopinski said, we were able to meet with a couple of the providers and just talk about additional questions and proposals. We continue to kind of quote-unquote negotiate some of that stuff. We did do another round of interviews with Extension Committee to fill that very bolster position, so hopefully that's gonna be happening soon. We did get the the official resignation from Nathan Drewitz. He'll be leaving, I believe, as of July first. And again, shout-outs to Midnot. It was a very successful meeting. I thought it went, it went a lot better than I was going in there prepared for. So I I was quite happy when we left that we're gonna get Absies on that. It was pretty much what we wanted, and they were very, very open to it, so.
Yep.
You know, that's a good example about working with the townships and the cities right here.
Yeah.
You know, you have communications, and I think we've grown that over the last few years pretty well.
It's been good collaboration.
Yep.
Okay, next.
Okay, um. I got in on the ECRG.
Oh, thank you.
A little bit late. It took me a half hour to figure out how to get in.
Our meeting went really late up there compared to what we thought, so I thank you.
So, yeah, I did get on a part of it. They talked about some programs with student training and education, staff training. They elected the chair, which is the current chair, and then the vice chair. And I think she was the same one, too. Oh, Terry, Terry Thomas, is that same one? Their next meeting's October sixth. Then I had RSVP. And they talked about the population having twenty-five percent mental health problems and depression. Just trying to keep people active and help out others. It's always a fun meeting. And I listened in on the opiate settlement, too. And, yeah, they did their new program with that Public Health America was included in that. So to share their goals and plans and funds and get things done. Yeah, I got a lot of notes, but like if, you know, have less than, was it twenty-five thousand? There there was minimal reporting. You just have to say the funds were used for what they said we could use them for. And then over twenty-five is a little bit more detailed to say, but it's pretty easy reporting for how you use the funds. And they had eighty-seven counties and a hundred and twenty cities in on it. And they're following the Colorado blueprint to, for guidance.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thanks, Commissioner Pop.
Well, I'll start out. We had on the seventeenth, we had a library board meeting. Not as good a news as as in the past. We're gonna have a rate increase from the county.
How much?
I think it's gonna be right around seven grand. It's still to be determined. We haven't adopted the official budget, but.
Our cost per capita just went up.
Yep, it kind of like going a step backwards, but we have to slow down a little bit on the reserves because if we continue at this pace, some point in time, we could have a five or six percent increase in deal. And a lot of it'll depend on what we get from the Minnesota Reserve, Library Reserve Fund. That's coming apart or coming down the pipe for that. We never know until September is the part. We do have built-in, we've got a lot of staffing issues, so we we have some money there. And I just canceled the June meeting for library because we have not enough business to really, you know, have a library board meeting.
Well, that saves a little bit on the per diems, then.
Yeah, right. Most of the, most of the counties are salaried out, so they're not per diems. The other part is that as we go forward here and we start with county negotiations, I'm hoping that we can work with the library cuz we have Susan Hanson, who will probably be our county labor attorney, working on both. So we could do one in the morning and one in the afternoon, maybe, so save me some time. Yeah, and and she she kind of heard that comment. She goes, absolutely, she said so.
Would you get a discount then?
What?
Yeah.
I bet, yeah, right. And then we had the the park board meeting.
And you heard all about that. That was a long, productive meeting. They discussed, you know, the the online stuff. They thought was really good.
How they liked the Benton Beach Playground equipment.
Oh, on that note, so yesterday, my wife took two grandkids down there, and she goes, wow, it is awesome. And she, while she was there, she had, there was a couple came in with their camper, and the first thing they did is come over. They installed new equipment, and they were just thrilled at, you know, and she, Kathy said, it looks great. I haven't seen it. She said, it's fantastic. She goes, you know, looks like new. She thought the installer did a great job. So that part's all all good there. And then, of course, we had the Watap, we had BAP board meeting, just little, you know, we didn't get selected for the Brownfield Grant, which was a little bit of a downer. She's got several things in the works that a lot of it's more on the confidential side. And then on June first, I had the SEDs for Region Five, I believe it is, for Benton, Stern, Sherburne, and that. We have to update the plan, and Amanda and the guy from Sherburne County are gonna rewrite the plan. We have to get it adopted in order to qualify for some of the funding that's coming forth on that. I think, you know, we're gonna have to have a joint powers agreement again to, in order to get some of this funding. But they'll be working for that quite furious and fast. They have to get it done. But with, you know, Amanda, and I can't think of the guy from Sherburne County that's in charge. Oh, yeah, Dan Weber, actually Benton County resident. No, that's.
That's right.
Yep, they're going to head that up and get it done, and it's a short period of time. Deadlines are approaching, so. That part is good, you know. Last time we met, several times in Monticello to get it done, and commissioners went. Three of the commissioners always went when we did that, and we want to kind of eliminate that this time. They'll bring the plan before us, and we'll just adopt it. And that was all that I had.
Commissioner Pinsky?
Mister Chair, I got one more note. Obviously, we sat on the the Solid Waste Committee together. I was on the phone talking with Todd Schultz, the Director of Development in Sauk Rapids, yesterday morning after our cowl. And he's like, you gotta go down and see that the park, that some of the score grants helped fund some of the playground equipment, which, you know, got got installed finally. They ran into some granite issues. But within an hour and a half of that fence being taken down around it and opened up, the park was full. I actually got a couple of pictures. I'll send around, but it was, it was amazing. I'm like, Todd, this literally just opened. He goes, it opened like an hour and a half ago.
I drove by last night, yeah, and there were kids in splash pad playing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah. So.
Also, one other very quick comment, just on on the broadband township thing. Again, we are continuing to move forward with additional townships. You know, we're trying to schedule Mayhew Lake, Minden, and Gilman to next.
Yep.
So that process is slowly moving forward.
Yep.
Again, trying to make schedules work.
Yep.
Okay, comments or concerns by commissioners?
Mister Trav, one quick comment. Could we set a date to do our hopefully annual commissioner picnic for our employees? I don't know what date works best. If we try, if, is there still a July date that is kind of a county employee recognition week or something? I believe we tied it to last year, or am I just imagining?
Yeah, there. Yeah, there was a week.
I know there's county government week.
Maybe that's.
Maybe that's what it was. Okay.
Yeah, but we had one in July. We, when we had it last year.
This was towards the end of July.
Anybody knowing we had it last year?
Could look in the count.
Johanna's on here.
Wasn't it the end of July?
Yeah.
There she's at.
Let's just take a look.
Johanna? Hello?
I believe it was after one of our board meetings.
Yeah, I, I don't remember.
She's on.
She, she was.
She might, she might be coming in here now.
You want to try and say in that same week or?
Well, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Could we do it after a board meeting? I mean, we're here. That's what we did last time, wasn't it?
There's Johanna.
I don't think, I think we did, it took a full day because you had to get set.
Well, he had it prepped though, kind of. And then we went out afterwards and did the.
July twenty-sixth.
July twenty-sixth.
So it was a Monday. My miss, my error.
Yeah, July twenty-sixth. It was a hundred and eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven. You were pretty cool.
That's about how many degrees it was.
Yeah, it was. That's what I thought you were going to say.
I got to write that down. One, one eighty-seven times one and a half.
Yeah.
Or probably better go two hundred.
Yeah, I would at least. Yeah.
I would. Two twenty-five probably.
So should we look at the twenty-fifth again?
Well, I guess my thought is.
It's on a Monday?
Yeah, but with doing burgers, I mean, you don't think we could do that after a board meeting?
It'd be a later lunch.
Yeah, it would be. Cause if our board meeting goes to eleven, there's no way.
Well, we could just make sure it doesn't.
Not only that, but you got to prepare and what, some people take breaks at eleven-thirty already. You know, they have a set time for.
All right. So what date are you thinking?
July twenty-fifth. Do it the same Monday?
I think that works.
It works for me.
All right.
You won't be here?
What time, what time do you want to start?
You, oh. Should we go up one week?
Up to the eighteenth work for you?
I think, I think you did a lot of behind the scenes work.
Are you going to explain to my wife on my anniversary that that's what I'm doing?
Yes, I'll take care of that.
You will? Okay, then I'm good.
Is that really your anniversary?
Are we moving to the eighteen?
Yes.
That's fine. I'll just have our hot date at night instead of lunch.
That's fine. Well, bring her.
Bring her by for dinner.
Hey, that would be a hot date, cheap date. Then I could.
Yeah. Cheap date. That's what I did.
Thirty years, I mean, a burger at lunch ought to do it.
Okay, July eighteenth.
Chris, don't comment. And Jacob, no printing that.
No, no printing. Yeah.
July.
Johnson says cheap date at the county.
Okay. So we got to set a time though.
Eleven?
Started at eleven. We did eleven to two last year.
Is, is two too long or?
Eleven to two?
That's what we did last year.
We still got some people towards the end.
Yep.
Deputies and stuff like that.
And then.
Then we made a bunch of to-go's too.
Yeah, well, that's right. We did.
We spent that last hour making to-go's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Eleven to two.
Okay. Consensus with that?
Yep.
County lunch, July eighteen.
Commissioner Kapinski decide what else he's going to get.
Okay.
That was my only comment.
What else?
Chair.
What else do you need from us? Johanna or Monty or?
Would there be a single person I should be contacting with questions or sending? Is Commissioner Kapinski?
Sure. I see.
Yeah, right.
Uh, yeah.
I have a flyer and stuff that we did last year, so I can send that to Commissioner Kapinski.
Okay. And is that something you need to know right now?
No, no, no. And we set up the, the tents and things and.
Correct. Yep.
Tables inside and.
Okay.
Jeff and I can handle the logistics.
Okay, perfect.
Perfect. Yeah. Great.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Uh, set committee of a hall.
It looks like the only thing we want to add, Mr. Chair, is the, the open house that Chris mentioned is coming Monday from five to seven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at Sauk Rapids City Hall on the Kasaw One corridor study, Monday, five to seven. So that would be what? The thirteenth?
Yep.
Yep.
Five to seven, Sauk Rapids City Hall.
Chris, is that, you include all the way from county one to start by?
Highway twenty-three.
Twenty-five or whatever?